All meeting order. Start with Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good morning.
Good morning.
Next I have is the approval of today's agenda.
I will make a motion to approve today's agenda.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Are there any phone numbers up there that we need names for?
We have a 1-6-2-0.
Uh, 1-6-2-0.
Laura Cunningham.
Thank you.
And a 0-3-8-8.
0-3-8-8.
Jake Spencer.
Did you get that one? Thank you. Any other ones? Well, from there, I have 901, and it is the second consideration of the amendment of Article 23 of Ordinance Number 29 as modified by the Board of Supervisors.
Lance, I'd go ahead and make a motion to table this agenda item until July 8th at 9:01 a.m.
I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I can kind of give you a little, give you public additional insight as to just the motion to table. We've, I have, and I know you folks have too, because I get copied in on some of the same emails and public comments. There's additional comments and information that continues to be, you know, provided to the board. And I've also reached out to Attorney Dublinsky, RWE's attorney, because there still seems to be maybe some unknowns that it would benefit the board in making this decision. And so they've agreed to try to make an arrangement to meet with some on the county side and folks from RWE to maybe just make some of those unknowns more known.
Good.
So this would give us that window, a small window, to have such a meeting with them. And so I think it's an appropriate motion. Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing no more. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We're tabled. That moves the next item to another date.
Okay.
Now I have is the approval of the minutes of 5/27/2020 and 6/17 of 2020.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from May 27th and June 17th, 2020.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now I have approval of claims for payment of 6/24/2020.
I'd make a motion to approve the claims for payment dated June 24th, 2020.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Hey Lance, on that motion to table, the second consideration, did you pick a
date?
I did.
You did pick a date?
July 8th, 2020 at 9:01.
9:01.
Alright, thank you.
You're welcome.
Utility permits? I don't have any.
No, agreed.
Okay.
Now we got roads.
Yeah, it's been an interesting week. So we had Water Over the Road, which I'm sure everybody saw. Then our bigger priority right now, Greg, the ultimate negotiator, is at Elaine Farrick's house, because we need to purchase some land from her to move a road. So Iowa River has eaten the bank away, and yeah, we lost a lot of dirt this week. So yeah, we need to move a road. It's currently got a barricade on the side so that people don't get too close to the edge, but...
North side or south side?
Maybe the north side of her road. It'd be just west of Sylvan Hill.
Okay.
You know where that Harden City Bridge is at right now?
Yeah.
Up to the side, so it'd be just west of those curves.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
So yep, and Greg's been talking to her, and you know, she uses that road, he uses that road, so they both care about it.
Good.
Okay. So in coming weeks, we'll hopefully have something...
They were going to sign an agreement today, because Greg wanted to start the work now.
Okay.
And we kind of, I kind of set up the agreement that she would let us do the work now, we will survey it for what the work has been done, and then pay her.
Okay.
And there's crop damage too, because you know, they've already planted corn there.
Okay.
But it's that, or, and if you close that road, I don't know, it's like a 12-mile trip around.
Right. It's bad for emergency services.
Yes.
In your agreement, you're going to have a price ahead of time?
Yep.
Okay. Make sure we don't just do the construction without a price.
Correct.
Okay.
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 Alright. Anything else for us?
Not really.
Alright, well stay up there.
Heck, yep.
Next we have is a resolution establishing G.G. Avenue.
So this is the new road we built, oh Buckeye Township, to avoid replacing a bridge over the South Fork. So we built a new road. The landowner would like it to become a Level C road with a gate, but, so we did this about 10 years ago. So looking at the process, we established it first, then we'll work on making it Level C. So this is your chance, if you don't want it to be just called G.G. Avenue, this is your chance to change the name to...
Taylor Road.
I was thinking G, it could be Granzo, yeah.
I will make a motion to approve a resolution for establishment of G.G. Avenue.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Renee.
Aye.
BJ.
Aye.
Lance.
Aye. Motion carries. Next I have is the approval of a lease agreement of the CAT 323 excavator.
So we discussed this during our time, when we were doing our budget discussions about, Lance brought up, why don't we try leasing an excavator? So we've gone through the process, and we've gotten the price back from them, and everything seems to be in agreement. They just wanted something in the minutes of you guys approving this lease agreement. And what was it for? Was it like a little over three grand a month?
$3,093.26.
Yep. And we thought that's very reasonable, and after the five years is up, we can either buy it, or we can enter into a new agreement for another machine, and yeah.
And this seems to kind of be the growing trend in government, you know, acquisition of product, just because you don't have to worry about having an 18 or 20-year-old machine.
Correct. So... Their current one was an 03, I believe, so it was getting up there.
Yeah.
I'd make a motion to approve entering the lease agreement for CAT 323 excavator, transaction number 3900311, with Caterpillar Financial.
I will second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? When we did all this, did we go through Beth and the process?
Yeah, I kind of spoke to her about it, but...
And she didn't have an issue with it? Okay. Just making sure on that one. Any other discussion? Hearing no more. Roll call.
BJ.
Aye.
Renee.
Aye.
Lance.
Aye. Motion carries. Next is the approval of the Iowa DOT agreement for Bridge 11009.
Yep. So this is on M Avenue, the south of the landfill, a couple miles. It's just a half mile off of 65. But yeah, bridge needs done, so this is just an agreement for it.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the Iowa DOT Agreement 1-20-HBP-SWAP-001.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now I have is an approval of DOT Agreement on Bridge 12015.
So this one is over a county highway, and it'll be just south of Buckeye. So this one's more of our priority.
I'd make a motion to approve the Iowa DOT Agreement 1-20-HBP-W, or SWAP-3031 Bridge, 12,015.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Next I have is a motion to relinquish interest in chattel property in possession of Friendship Club, including the vehicles titled to the county, directing the board chair or designated to execute any documents necessary to effecuate and relinquish.
I didn't know if Lynn was on there and had anything, had any comments.
Let's unmute Lynn. Lynn?
He might have done it, tried himself. Are you there yet?
Yep.
It says I'm muted.
There you go.
Yeah. No, I just, well, is Daryl there?
Yes.
Okay, because I talked with Daryl, I talked with you guys, and then visited with Daryl about the items that were at the Friendship Club, because it becomes a new entity as of July 1. And there are some things there that were purchased through county funds. A lot of them, I would say, probably don't have much value anymore, because some of them were purchased as many as, you know, I think 20 years ago. But we just, so I think we just thought we needed to do some kind of motion through the board or whatever, and I would hope that, you know, whatever's there could just kind of stay with the, with the club. I think, you know, there's, there's trade-offs, because now the county won't be also responsible for salaries and payroll and everything too, or, and we won't need to, you know, budget for that program. So I mean, there's, there's advantages also for the county as far as the, the new entity taking those things over. So I asked Daryl to just, you know, look at it legally, and so, yeah, I'll just let him talk about what he came up with.
Hey Lynn, while I got you here...
Yep.
Can you explain the bus? That's the vehicle?
Uh-huh. The, the bus was donated, when we still had a county home, there was a client there, and when a family member passed away, they left money specifically to be used for a van or bus, and it was to serve basically people with disabilities. And at that time, they thought it would be used by the county home. But then, you know, that had been written up several years ago, and then by the time this all happened, we were in the process of already closing our county home. So then that bus just continued to be used for people with disabilities, like when we had people from the county home that moved into town, into waiver homes. We used it some for, for things for them. They would, they would usually use it a couple times a year to go on trips. They went to state fair, and then we used it for the Friendship Club. But then, because we didn't use it that much, we also, you know, conservation has used it like to, Wes used to take it and go like out into western Iowa once or twice a year to look at the, I don't know, whatever they were doing, like field trips and stuff. But, you know, the last year or two, I think it's pretty much just been used by the Friendship Club. It's at the Friendship Club. So it didn't really cost the county anything initially. It wasn't, you know, you guys didn't have to purchase, pay purchase for it. There's been some repairs made. We had to replace the battery a while back. You know, you've probably put new tires on it. So I did, we did quote insurance to cover it through the new entity, so it would go off the county's insurance. So we would prefer to just have that be part of the new entity also, and then I think, you know, we'll, we'll keep it around, and if it becomes too costly to, to repair, we'll probably just, you know, get rid of it. But, or we could give it back to the county if you want it, but I don't. So, but that's...
How often has Wes used it? How often has Wes or anybody else from the county used it?
Well, I don't think, I mean, Wes used to use it maybe three to four times a year max, but I don't think he's used it for the last year at least. One of his guys used to actually help us do some of the work on it, but I don't think that person's with, isn't an employee of conservation anymore, so they haven't really, we've been having, you know, like Dale Howard's basically done most of the, the maintenance on it, because we haven't really found anybody else that works on those type things. We had some issues with the air conditioning, so we got that fixed. I mean, it's, you know, a bus like that, it doesn't have that many miles, but it's old. You know, it was probably, it was like 19, you know, it'd be like a mid 90s bus, and it's probably got, I don't know, maybe 70,000 miles on it. So I...
Wes will, I see Wes is on. Wes, do you have any comments as far as, you know, your ability to, to use that or not use that?
We, uh, we used it for, we went to like Neil Smith a couple times, we went to some bald eagle watching events with it. We've taken people up to the Foslin Prairie Center up in Floyd County, but we haven't done a lot the last couple of years with it. Like, I think with, with insurance concerns and things like that, we kind of stepped away from using it. After visiting with Judy Funk and some other ones, they had some concerns about us hauling people in it with liability and things, so we, we kind of phased away from doing that.
Okay.
I feel like, Daryl, did you want to speak anymore? I think it's all covered.
I think it's covered.
Okay. I can entertain a motion?
I'd make a motion to relinquish interest in chattel property in possession of the Friendship Club, including the vehicles titled to the county, and directing the board chair or designated to execute any documents necessary to effecuate the relinquishment.
I will second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing no more. Roll call.
BJ.
Aye.
Renee.
Aye.
Lance.
Aye. Motion carries. Next I have is appointment to the Faith and Action Friendship Club, Inc., Board of Directors.
So Lance, I'd make a motion to appoint the following to a one-year term, acknowledging that they've already chosen, but just so it's public information. Robin England, one-year term. Tim Rogers, one-year term. Bev Dirksen, one-year term. Sandy Butt, one-year term. Lynn Adams, one-year term. The following to a two-year term, Jerry Kramer, Joan Guile, Robin Hartkopf, Eileen Cruz, Miriam Weber, Ruth Norum, and Dave Ellerdein.
Okay. I would second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next I have is Community Services Update Mode of Operation Plan.
Lance, I'd make a motion to adopt and approve the emergency mode of operations for Central Iowa Community Services.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
This would just help with the day-to-day continuity of operations.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next is a Public Assistance Grant Number 4483. I don't have anything on this.
Renee, you asked if that'd be added to the agenda.
And I don't remember what it was. Can we just...
Table it?
Yes, table that till later. I think we're going to be recessing anyway for drainage, if we can come back to that shortly before drainage.
Do you want to table that to the 9:55?
Sure.
I'll second that.
I'll have to get a copy of that.
So it's been moved and seconded to table to 9:55. Any discussion?
I don't know, that came up last week.
Thomas says that he has that.
For disaster funding.
Okay.
Do you want to talk?
Yes. Can we unmute Thomas? You must be muted, Thomas.
Should we just do this at 9:55, man?
Yeah. Can, are you available at 9:55, Thomas, to attend at that time? And I'm sure I have a copy of that too, I would be able to come up with.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing no more. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
I know what that is now, but I'm not going to try to explain it. I'll let him explain it.
Oh, that's fine.
So...
Next I have is a motion for board chair to execute finance documents pursuant to Resolution Number 2019-14.
I'll make a motion to approve the board chair to execute the finance documents pursuant to Resolution Number 2019-14.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
This is in regard to the financing with Greenbelt Bank and Trust for the HVAC system.
Any other discussion? Hearing no more. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next is a request for assignment of tax sales certificate. If Michelle's on there, maybe she wants to talk. I don't know if she's on there. Michelle?
Yeah, I'm here. I don't have a whole lot to say. It's pretty self-explanatory. The private individual is asking for a request for the assignment of the tax sales certificate that the Harden County is holding. These are always good to get assigned to private individuals, so that we can get these taxes back on the tax roll and get the tax collected that was owed. This resolution is asking for the relinquish of the interest, and so we're compromising that. But as you can see, the dollar amount is not very much, and if we can get this property deeded to somebody that's going to pay the taxes, it's a win-win for everybody.
Thank you, Michelle.
You're welcome.
I'd make a motion to approve the request for tax sales certificate, CH18005.
I'll second it.
This is a resolution. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
And the request was made on behalf of a client by attorney Tuller.
Any other discussion? Hearing no more. Roll call.
BJ.
Aye.
Renee.
Aye.
Lance.
Aye. Motion carries. I believe we just did the resolution. They did, it was two-line items, so. Next is Appropriations Resolution Amendment. This is General Services, Department 50, of adding 225,000, secondary roads engineers subtracting 330,000. You're aware of this? Yeah, it's already happened.
I'd go ahead and make a motion to approve the Appropriations Resolution Amendment.
Oh, okay. I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? This was done on April 22nd. This is just the appropriation side of it. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oops, roll call. Roll call.
BJ.
Aye.
Renee.
Aye.
Lance.
Aye. Motion carries. Next I have is Fiscal Year 2021 Appropriations Resolution.
Due to the change in the, my main reason would be due to the change in the insurance plan and the savings that that has caused. At budget time, we hadn't made those final decisions on what insurance company we were using, so we, I think department heads used the old rates from our previous insurance carrier when determining their insurance for their employees and their budgets. After we've switched to IGHCP for our health insurance, that's obviously created a savings in each of those department budgets, and some of those are pretty sizable amounts. So I think to just start off with, I would make a motion to appropriate 50%, only 50% of department budgets for their use beginning July 1st of 2020. Really, okay, I'll just go ahead and make the motion and...
I'll second your motion, Renee.
It's been moved and seconded to appropriate 50% of appropriations. Is there any discussion? I, I think we can look at it right away and bring it back to the table again.
Right. We don't really have a definite amount, how it's going to affect each office, and I'd like to see maybe Becca go through and come up with what the amount of savings would be in each department's budget. But I firmly, firmly believe we need to leave that extra in the budgets to go to our carryover versus departments having the ability to spend that since, you know, if we appropriated it.
And I'd agree. I mean, the health insurance was something that none of us took lightly, and we really did our due diligence in shopping and shopping and finding out where our weaknesses were. We actually instituted, I think, a really proactive wellness program now, and incentivized better behavior and lifestyle choices. And so, you know, those things all played into, you know, saving a considerable amount of money on insurance. And so I agree, Renee, we, we don't, when we met with the department heads and it was one number, and that number has dropped considerably, and so I think we just need to reevaluate, you know, after the first of the fiscal year, and look at those things. So I think this is a good decision, and then we've been having department head meetings so that open and effective communication continues. So I think it's a good thing that we allow that communication on an individual department basis to be had. So I appreciate your, your consideration.
Any other discussion? Hearing no more. Roll call.
Renee.
Aye.
BJ.
Aye.
Lance.
Aye. Motion carries. Next is a resolution for inter-fund operating transfers.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution for inter-fund operating transfers.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Renee.
Aye.
BJ.
Aye.
Lance.
Aye. Motion carries. Next is the 2021 Advanced Issuance Payments Resolution.
I'd make a motion approving the advanced issuance of payments resolution for fiscal year 2021.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
BJ.
Aye.
Renee.
Aye.
Lance.
Aye. Motion carries. Next is a resolution for budget appropriation adjustments within the same service areas.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution for budget appropriation adjustments within the same service area.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Renee.
Aye.
BJ.
Aye.
Lance.
Aye. Motion carries. Now I have is a request to waive the right to appeal the DNR's decision to approve animal feed and operation construction permit, application Ferris pork sites, Section 16 of Ellis Township. And we got a letter from Dell Johnston asking to waive the 30 days. Jess, you want to talk about it, Annie, or you want me to? I can read the letter. Hardin County Supervisors, this is a request to waive the standard 30-day appeal for construction of the Ferris Pork Expansion Project based on the following. After initial construction application package was received by the county from the DNR, the county requested and was granted a 30-day extension citing the miscommunication within county offices related to the COVID-19. This situation created a delayed timeline from the outset of which affected the Ferris' interest rate with their lender and their priority status in the queue of their builder. The construction application, including the Master Matrix, was submitted twice through the DNR and county due to disagreement of surrounding eligibility for the family farm tax credit. After revisions and a second submittal, the Master Matrix point value was determined to be 520, well over the 440 needed for the project approval. Even if the disputed points of the distance to the nearest well were not accepted, which they were, the Master Matrix score would still be 490, fully 50 points beyond the requirement. The Master Matrix is the tool that the county has determined to use for livestock construction projects evaluation, Ferris Pork Master Matrix score is more than sufficient to meet the criteria. Brock and Ben Ferris Farm, all the ground in the facility manure management plan, in addition, they own their own manure application equipment and together with their father, land apply through injection. All the valuable manure from the facility onto their own farm ground is crop fertilizer. They are family farmers in the strictest sense. They live in the county, farm in the county, own their own livestock facility, farm and owned or family-owned ground, and apply all their own manure after sampling and testing to calculate the legal application rate for the planned crop. Their goal with this construction expansion project is to continue to make their living as citizens of Hardin County. Because brothers Brock and Ben Ferris have endured two separate building hearings during this process, and because of the delays in the approval, and given their responsibility and law-abiding farming operation, it seems the extra 30-day appeal services no purpose other than an additional unnecessary delay. With all due respect, our request is to allow the Ferris Pork Project proceed with no further delays by waiving the 30-day appeal. Dell Johnston.
That does have to be passed by a resolution.
And that's right here.
I would make a motion to approve resolution, the resolution extending or to waive the extra 30-day appeal process.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Next I have is an application for fireworks permit, Gurkey Lake and Campground.
Lance, I'd make a motion to approve the fireworks permit for Robert Gurkey, 19747 205th Street, Iowa Falls. They've been doing fireworks at that location for 10 years. They do have some medical staff on site along with water truck and four-wheelers and trying to remember the exact date, July 4th, 2020.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next I have is an application for liquor license, Pine Lake Country Club.
I'd make a motion to approve the Class C liquor license for Pine Lake Country Club located at 22502 County Highway S-56, Eldora, Iowa.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Effective date 7/17/2020, expiration 7/16/2021, it's a 12-month.
Yep, and the points of contact are Kevin Engelking, Ken Brownlee, and Marsha Pettigrew.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next is an adoption of the Hardin County Major Medical Plan.
After consulting with Becca Junker and the plan administrators from IGHCP, I would make a motion to adopt the Hardin County Major Medical Plan as presented.
I will second it.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next I have is change of statuses in community services.
I have three, and these three changes statuses are just due to the Friendship Club will become a standalone 501(c)(3) entity effective July 1st, so the staff will be directly employed by that entity and not the county. So, these are not disciplinary discharges or anything like that, they're just moving out from under our guys to their newly established 501(c)(3). So, the first I have is Parker Manning. The discharge will be effective 6/30/2020.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
The second would be Mary Nelson, effective 6/30/2020, discharge as well to be put under the 501(c)(3).
I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
The third one I have is the discharge effective June 30th, 2020, for Kathy Vitek.
I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion?
Yeah, just one thing, I think it goes without saying that I really appreciate the service of Mary and Parker and Kathy as very valuable, you know, tools and assets to the county as they've developed and worked alongside of one of probably the most successful drop-in centers in the central Iowa community services region. And I've seen as, you know, the chair-elect for the region, seen people try to imitate but hardly able to replicate what we have here in Hardin County. And so, these three individuals, along with people that have worked at the Friendship Club in the past, very valuable assets to our community and to our population that relies on them for very valuable services. So, I will think a true thank you to these individuals is, you know, amazing from the county's point of view.
I agree.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Next I have is change of status conservation.
I will make a motion to approve the change of status for George Hefner, he was a park aide intern. Actually, Wes has, he was a temporary seasonal part-time person, and Wes has mentioned here that his, and he's at the end of his seasonal work, and he was done last fall, but conservation is just needing to get him off of the books.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Next I have is change of status environmental health and zoning.
Lance, I'd ask to table the change of status for environmental health and zoning to a later date.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion?
I just need additional time to do some additional research and gather data.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Next I have is change of status property management.
I'd make a motion to approve the change of status for Jody Mesh, property manager, to a salary effective July 1st, 2020, to $75,500 and zero cents.
I will second it.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? What's his current salary? 70?
Yeah.
Okay. And we've done some performance reviews, do you want to?
Sure. One of the reasons that I feel this is justified is the fact that we went several months without having anybody in place to assist him, and so while he, his position doesn't allow for overtime or any other type of benefit to making sure that the facilities are well-kept and maintained, that after his performance review, I believe that this was a justified salary increase.
Okay.
So, I guess I'll open this up for the discussion some more. Salary increase, we're increasing due to the cost savings and doing a double job in the past, or for two months, the salary will stay with the employee for the rest of his career?
Well, actually, it won't. I mean, I've, I talked to the employee and, and he realizes this could be a one-year thing, just because we're unable to give a lump sum bonus. And so, next year, performance appraisal time, we can then, you know, evaluate. He's now, has an assistant, and so his duties have, you know, decreased, and so talking to him, he'd be willing to reevaluate the salary at a later time.
To go back down is what you're asking? Or would it be better if we raised it up a little bit at a time?
I'm content with this. I believe that Jody earnestly will work with us, and I think if we confer with Mike Galloway if there is an issue, that I think it's justified, and especially during what we've gone through the last, you know, few months, that the amount of cleaning and sanitizing and attention to that detail, you know, could be considered, you know, somewhat, could be considered to some life-saving or for the greater good and health and wellbeing. So, I'm, at this point, I'm very content with the motion.
I mean, you had evidently had figures or came up with that, a means of coming up with that.
Correct.
Figure.
So, the months that he was without an assistant and was here and unable to collect overtime was a period of a little over two months where the amount of money that would have been paid to an assistant and with, to help him with those duties would have been $5,441 is what the county saved, but yet passed on to him and was unable to compensate him during that time period.
I mean, because my thought here is, so compensating, compensating him for those two months is one thing. Then that being added to his salary, but, I mean, if he knows that that's going to be readjusted again next year, I mean, you've confirmed that with him.
And he, he was very open to discussing that at a later point.
Okay.
I, I think we're opening a can of worms, that when other departments have the same issues and the same problems, that if by doing this, everybody will come to us with this issue, and it's, and it's a tough, it's a tough answer to do. I would, I would be more apt to look at a lower increase as a permanent salary versus a, for the job that he does do and the job that he'll continue doing, versus looking at a up and down on a salary.
Right.
Jump like that, because I think we're going to have every department come to us with these issues every time they're short-staffed.
And maybe one of the ways to resolve this going forward is confer with Attorney Galloway, develop a policy, and see what the best practice is, you know, Alers and Cooney represents dozens of other counties and municipalities, and see what the best practice is, what other counties have learned, you know, by doing it one way or another. And so, I don't, as much as I would like to resolve this today, I'd be more than happy to, you know, go back to the drawing board and confer with Mike and get some good feedback and input. And I know you're not going to offend Jody.
No, I, I, no, I don't.
It's one of those things where we have done similar things in the past when we've been, you know, short in positions, but I'm willing to take the, you know, baby steps on this as well.
I would prefer that we kind of delay action.
I would just call for the vote at this point, Lance and.
Okay, all in favor say aye. All opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you for the follow-on. Okay.
Next I have is change of sta, change of status sheriff's office.
I have three. We have effective June 15th, 2020, discharge of Amy Robb as a dispatcher.
I will second it.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
The second one I have is resignation of Matthew Evans as a permanent part-time correctional officer, effective June 16th, 2020.
I will second it.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
The third one, I need some clarification from Sheriff McDaniel if he's on. Okay.
He is.
Okay, good morning, Sheriff, how are you?
Good morning.
Good. Hey, this third one, Jacob Sweet, it, reason for change, is this a discharge or is it a Under the reason for.
He was offered a position and never attended, never came in, attended any training, anything along those lines, so I would suppose that's considered a discharge.
Okay. Thank you, Dave. I'd make a motion to approve the discharge due to no show for training for Math, Jacob Sweet, effective June 16th, 2020.
I will second it.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next I have is COVID-19 update. Thomas, you're here, you want to come to the front?
So, we're still moving forward. The number of cases, 53 was the last email I saw. Rocky and several other public health agencies have sent very strongly worded press releases out reminding people that we might be tired of COVID, but it's not tired of us yet, and so to be diligent in handbashing, social distancing, all of that material. We continue to meet every week and continue to look at the processes that we need to open the courthouse and the other administrative buildings, and then we're also looking at the grants. I just got an email this morning on the supplemental for the EMPG and the, in the EMA, and then we're still looking at the public assistance, COVID-19 public assistance, and that's the discussion item that you guys tabled until about five minutes from now. But we're still continuing to process a lot of PPE to the nursing homes and the hospital. The supply chain that the state thought was out there is not there yet, so we're still having those discussions with the state home line security and IDPH and the amount of PPE and the direction, the direction that the healthcare workers are supposed to use their PPE. In fact, I had to meet with Senator Sweeney the other day about some inconsistencies in the guidance.
Thank you. Anything else? Did Rocky have anything by chance, or?
Sure, sure. I think the new, is there a new public health director?
Yes, Megan.
Yeah, I think she's on.
Is Megan there? Did you? No?
No.
Okay, let's move on to public comments, give people the capability to unmute themselves.
Jess?
I was very kindly asked by one of our constituents to read a comment for her since she could not be unmuted, is that okay?
Sure. Go ahead.
Okay. Hold on, I think. It's from Donna. And it says, I just wanted to say thank you to Wes at the Conservation Department for his help with our little raccoon friend. Now Bob doesn't have to worry about his nine-pound puppy getting beat up by a young raccoon, and I don't have to ask for her every time she wants to go potty because a new adult decided to have its first home under our back porch. I'd also like to thank Lance, Taylor, and Secondary Roads guys for their help with our travel situation. Things are stressful enough right now without having to deal with the trouble caused by seven inches of rain in less than a week. Anyway, just wanted to say thanks, guys, for the help, greatly appreciated.
Perfect.
I have a public service, I just do a bit.
Just for heads up, all I did was carry a message to Taylor, other than that. Just for heads up, all I did was carry a message to Taylor other than that. I didn't do anything.
You didn't take a shovel out or anything?
Nope, just, just forward the message to Taylor, told them the situation. Public comments. They can unmute themselves at this time.
There's some in the chat box, but I can't read them from here. Some comments.
I had, this was just, I had chat muted in disregard because it was like a half hour ago.
Okay.
We have four minutes before we go back into our 9:55 with no public comments at this time. I could ask to recess for four minutes.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to recess.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, we'll be back at 9:55. Well, it's 9:55 and I'm going to reconvene. First thing we have is public assistance grant number 4483.
So this is a, this is a question, um, emergency management was able, is able as a separate entity to be able to apply for public assistance, which is the federal funds for response to the COVID. The county is also able to apply for public assistance to be able to pay for the things that we've done to open the courthouse and continued operations of PPE and things like that. When Jessica and Mindy got on the phone with the FEMA PA person and the state's PA person, they preferred that we go with one or the other, not both. They didn't, they didn't want us both having PA out there. And there's some advantages to it. So number one, if the county has a grant application out there, they have to spend $3,300 before they can start getting anything into the grant application. And the other way, the emergency management has to spend $3,300 before they can get into the public assistance. If we merge those, then we only spend one, $3,300, and then everything starts counting into the public assistance grant. The other is, is that the public assistance for, for all intents and purposes is a, like a 90/10 kind of a process. So it's not 100% funding. So if we said, if I say that we spend $50,000 as the county, then between the two, emergency management and the county, we would have to spend $5,000 of our own dollars, and that may split up obviously. But then, the FEMA grant then pays $45,000. If we separate that back and go back to, the county might spend $25,000, the emergency management's might spend $25,000, now we're only going to spend, now we're going to have $2,500 in each, and then we're only going to get $20,000 in each from the federal government. If we combine them, we, we make it easier for paperwork, number one. And Jessica and I have talked about that, we can make the line items work much easier as one. It'll be easier in invoicing and keeping track of where monies, where items are going. But then the federal government isn't looking at two different types of grants and then coming in and trying to decide, was this an emergency management, was this county? So if I ask Renee to put this on, I'm fine, excuse me, I am fine with putting it all through the emergency management, but with the caveat that understanding we've already spent like $6,000 that is not in the budget because it's COVID and we have no, we just didn't know it was going to come up. And if we continue to spend that and we put in what the county's got, we're going to have to get more money from the county to be able to cover those expenses upfront before any of us get reimbursed. Because it's a spend the money and then get reimbursed. Does that make sense?
Yep.
But the federal, the state and federal folks would like us to have one application rather than two. So for you guys, it's a decision, you can either put it under emergency management, and then just know that we're going to have to have some discussions back and forth about cash in the, cash in the accounts, or we can put it over to the county and we're still going to have to have discussion about money in the accounts. Because nobody, nobody has budgeted for COVID.
Right. Okay. So there was no document, I was thinking I had some type of a document that I was supposed to-
There is a document to be signed.
Right.
They sent Jessica the document after their meeting for the county to-
Designate.
Cancel their PA request if that's the decision of the board. And then they can go over to the EMA PA.
Don't you, do you think it would be easier or better to have it under the county just because of the funding? We have more resources-
Keeping it internal.
Yeah, I think the funding would be easier to transfer and keep tracked if it was better under emergency management.
And when the reimbursement comes in, it wouldn't have to be transferred another time.
But how do you get the reimbursement back?
I have to do all the paperwork to get it.
But once we give it to you, I don't know that we can get the money back from our, back into the general fund.
Oh yes, no, you would.
Okay.
Because when the check comes, then it's a upstairs, we just say, I know what is county, we'll have diff, we'll have two line items, but it'll be going into one grant application. And then when the reimbursement comes back, we know what that percentage is.
Right, and then it can just be separated. Okay?
Yeah, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Oh, it does. I just want to make sure that, you know, I, let's throw a number out there, let's throw 100,000 at it, and I just want to make sure it didn't stay in your budget because we pulled it from something, we need it back.
Right, right.
Just like Taylor's with that FEMA funding for road repairs, when that comes back in, that'll-
Does that come back to our fund?
Yeah.
Yeah, it, it'll be right up front. All the accounting will be there so that we can have those ongoing discussions of where, where we're at in expenses, where we're at with the grant application, and how far we're getting with reimbursement and things like that.
Okay. So then it'd have to be a request each time you need more funding, and we'll have to find it.
At this point, I think we're going to be, I mean, at the beginning of this, it go, the, until the public assistance is closed, which it's not, and I don't see it closing, it's going to be a process of just being able to even find money in either of us to, right now, even with the $6,000 we've spent out of the emergency management fund under the emergency funds, under that line item for emergency, with our budget amendment, we were able to move dollars around and cover that expense to the end of the fiscal year.
Okay.
So in emergency management, we're, we're still in budget, even with that $6,000.
Well, public health paid for a lot of things.
Yes, yes, public health has been, so, we've tried to use the money as, as the different funds were available, we've tried to use the money out of whoever's fund was going to get you, get cut first. So who would run out first? So public health had response dollars, I think it was like $10,000. We've run through that, and now public health is able to use and move into their preparedness. There was a memo came out that they changed the preparedness dollars that were out there into response dollars, so they're able to use some of that for response. And so some of the PPE that we're buying for first responders and so on is still being put through the public health federal grants that are available. And then we'll be getting into our PA. Now, the stuff that you guys did with the courthouse, the glass-
Barrier.
In all, the glass barriers and stuff, that's, that obviously just has to go to public assistance. We just talked about it upstairs yesterday with the court. I met with Judge Haney and the district court judge, can't remember his name, and the clerk of court. And there were some items that we were talking about, and if that has to come about in putting some type of barrier between the public and the lawyers and-
Judges.
Yeah, there's that, that rail-
Right.
For the gallery. If we need to put a glass wall up there to keep the public away from, then that'll have to go under the public assistance side.
That's not paid for by the state?
State judiciary?
They're, they're paying for, they're doing all of their own PPE and all of their, yeah, they've got their-
But this would be kind of a, are they thinking that would be a permanent structure also?
Yes.
So that's kind of goes with the building, I would imagine, is what their thought is?
Yeah, that's infrastructure.
That'd be a building change, not a court change.
Okay.
So I just, it's, it's up to you guys.
So you're, so you prefer it go under emergency management for the-
It'd be the easiest to.
Yep, okay. Yep, all right. Okay.
Because we also, the other piece of that is that 99% of the expenses go through the emergency operations center and through the group every week about what we're spending and all of that. If we do it through the county, no offense to you guys, but it ends up having to get, you have to do it on a, you have to do it on a agenda and you have to-
And Mindy has, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't like keeping it over there.
Right. Yep. Okay.
Okay. So, yeah, I'll just need a motion or some type of resolution or something from you guys to make that happen, one way or the other.
Okay, well, I will make a motion to approve the public assistance grant number 4483 to be administered through the emergency management department in Hardin County.
And the county will relinquish their application.
Yes, and Hardin County will relinquish our application through that grant, or for that grant.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion?
Yeah, I appreciate just you sorting it out of the weeds because it's very convoluted and it can go several different directions, so thank you Thomas.
Any other discussion? Hearing no more, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
I'll go up and have, just try to turn Lance, the paperwork to sign off on.
Okay.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you Thomas.
Oh, next I have is a request to waive an appeal to the DNR decision to approve animal feeding operation construction permit application Tribe B site, section eight of, section eight Alden Township. Uh, let's go ahead and let Seth talk. Yep. Senator Brandy, I think, isn't it? Nope, Seth. Seth, you can unmute yourself.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, we were requesting the county to waive the right to the appeal. We'd like to get construction started. We, the owners would like to get pigs placed as soon as, as soon as possible because the industry's short on, on pig space right now with all the problems in the industry. Also, it'll, it'll, it should help the, the concrete contractor and the general contractor, both from Hardin County, they have the employees that could use the work. So we'd like to get people to work as fast as possible.
I'd go ahead and make a motion to approve, what's that? Right. Approve the resolution of waiver of Hardin County's right to appeal issuance of final construction permit for the construction of a confined animal feeding operation by the DNR for Tribe B Farms LLC.
I will second it.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Normally, we do these in emergency purposes, weather coming on, things like this. This is one that came in the same time the other one, the Farisite came through, we asked for the extension on both of these. And considering that, they both had to redo their submission to us again, and this would get them back on track as well.
And, you know, I can appreciate trying to open up more space as we're trying to rehouse some of the animals that are already in production. And so that's opening up some space rather than alternative methods of reducing swine population.
Agreed.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Aye.
Renee.
Aye.
Lance.
Aye. Motion carries. From there, we're going to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Meeting of the public hearing on the animal feeding operation construction permit 114 shop site, section six of Alden Township. In attendance, we have the three of us. I didn't hear it. Thank you, Jessica. And we have, what do you have on there Brian?
Yeah.
Let's go ahead and ask for the proof of publication. Okay, and let's go to attendance, do we know everybody online? Okay. And let's go to Brian for review of project. Brian? I'm opening the public hearing.
Yeah, I guess I just, if there was any questions that you had on the matrix and Hawk facility and placement there, you've got in front of you.
I just thought it was my private.
So it's a 4,800 head site in that section six of Alden Township, like you'd said, blow building pit, single barn site, had the matrix score of 445 points, and you've got the different scoring there that we took to get to that, so if there's any specific questions, you know, the nearest neighbor there was, owns the facility, you can see on that map for distances and no concerns there on the placement.
Well, let's open it up for public comments. Everybody can, should be able to unmute themselves now. Are there any public comments?
Hey Lance, this is Bob Havens.
Yeah, Bob, go ahead.
I just wanted to make note that the P index calculation for these, I think there were four fields, I don't have them in front of me, were very low. And in fact, if all of the P index calculations were done for Pine Lake watershed and they came in this low, we would not have a problem with Pine Lake. The way it stands right now, my latest calculation for Pine Lake watershed was 1.79, and it needs to drop to 0.6 in order for it to, to, to fix the lake all by itself. And this would require that no more than, than the crop removal rate of phosphorus be applied to the fields. And I do note though, that this, that all these fields is applying phosphorus at over three times the crop removal rate, and at some point, pardon me.
Are we talking about the Pine Lake one, or are we talking about this public hearing?
Talking about this one at the public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
I do note that, that this, this manure management plan indicates that there's over three times the phosphorus of the crop removal rate. that there's over three times the phosphorus of the crop removal rate. And that at some point down the road, the, the levels of phosphorus in the fields will rise. And, and, and we can see that on every field where manure is continually applied. And, and at some point, they'll rise up into the 30, 40 PPM range, which is over two times what's required to grow 200 bushel corn. And it's considered very high in phosphorus. And at that point, the dissolved phosphorus component will overcome the soil erosion component. And at that point, I think Hardin County's in trouble. According to a professor from Purdue University, once phosphorus levels reach the level where phosphorus component, the runoff component exceeds the erosion component, there's not a whole lot anybody can do about it. So when we reach that point, that would be the tipping point. And we're already there on a few of the fields. However, these fields show a P-index of, I think all of them are less than 0.6. And so there are fields out there that you can overapply manure to and not exceed the P-index calculations levels, at least for a while. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. I appreciate your comments.
Nick? Can you unmute yourself?
Hello?
There you go.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, once again, uh, once again, if this site here goes in within a year and a half to two years, I'm looking at additional 15,000 head of hogs in my neighborhood here. Not including the cattle confinements or what I have to the east of me. My question is, is how saturated are we going to get here before something has to be done? We have the fly issue. We have the road issues. You guys know my road at times gets to be unbearable. I just think we, we got too many period. Within a five mile radius, I got 26 buildings. You guys keep approving these, I think you guys need to go back and redo your mission statement because the bill, the ability to recreate out here, which is in your mission statement, is not the case. It's not, you're not possible to have people out to recreate. You're not able to have company out to, to your house. This is getting absolutely unreal. So I'm sure you guys are going to approve this, but I'd really prefer if you guys united. You guys gotta get this thing under control. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Nick. Any other public comments? I'm sure everybody gets a chance to talk. Do we have any written comments? Well, I can ask one more time for any more public comments. Hearing no more. If you can ask for a motion.
And make a motion to close the public hearing.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We are closed. And now I could ask for adjournment.
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. This will be on, to adjourn, this will be on next week's agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We're adjourned.